This month we're gonna do it differently, not gonna ask any questions, I'm just gonna award the certificate of achievement to Montserrat. Also, this is what your teachers say about you. Montserrat is a wonderful student, we can always rely on Montserrat to be our
Montserrat is generous and thoughtful towards her classmates and teachers alike and always has a kind word to share. Montserrat should be very proud of her work at Carbondale at CRES. Thank you very much. Congratulations. Yeah, Crystal River Elementary. Thank you.
That's it for today.
Good job of covering it up.
All right, it being 6:05, call the meeting to order. Kathy, will you do roll call?
Luis Iones.
Here.
Dan Richardson.
Here.
Marty Silverstein.
Here.
Erica Sparhawk.
Here.
Heather Henry.
Here.
And Bomfok.
Here.
Lonnie Kitching.
Here.
All right, we have a full house. Welcome, everybody, after an extended break. Item number two is our consent agenda, pretty lengthy one. So item A is accounts payable. Item B is trustee minutes from March 15th. Item C is trustee minutes from March 22nd. Item D is a liquor license renewal for the Sopers Lodge. Item E is a retail marijuana manufactured infused product license renewal application for ACTA, AKTA. Item F is medical marijuana manufactured infused product license renewal for renewal application. I'm just realizing that it's not ACTA, that might be a typo. Oh, no.
One's medical, one's retail.
Right, thank you. Item G is a maintenance contract for North Face Bike Park. Item H is a modification of premises for the street side dining for Allegria. Item I is modification of premises, street side dining for Fat Thai. Item J is modification of premises, street side dining for the Brass Anvil. Item K is a modification of premises for street side dining for the Black Nugget. And item L is the modification of premises for the retail and medical marijuana manufactured infused product facility, also ACTA, AKTA. And in a subsequent packet Kathy sent out, completed packet for March 15th as well as the modification of premises for Brass Anvil. Any questions, comments, concerns, want to pull anything off? All right, I'd entertain a motion.
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Second.
All right, motion by Ben, seconded by Marty. No, motion by Marty, seconded by Ben. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Oppose say no. Motion passes. All right, thank you. All right. Do we have anyone in the audience who'd like to address the board on an item that's not on the agenda? How about on the Zoom world? Okay, we will move on to item number four, trustee comments. Everybody got anything?
You look my way, I don't want to disappoint you.
All right.
Well, first off, I'd like to acknowledge and thank Kathy, our town clerk, and her band of elves, Mark Chang, John Folkrod, and our friends from Glenwood who helped.
Carlos Stuckey and Kenny Taitler.
And Kenny Taitler to run the election as smoothly as they did. The reason why I'm especially excited and Kathy has just been doing this for a long time, and once again, good job. Thank you. This one's gonna take all of two minutes, and I'll keep it to two minutes.
Okay.
I want to acknowledge Bowden, Luis, Heather, and Dan. As your time as mayor, student trustee, and trustee comes to a close. You guys have helped this board do a fantastic job. We may not always agree, as a matter of fact, we don't always agree. But getting us through the pandemic, providing relief for those in town who are the most economically disadvantaged by the pandemic, getting a lot done in terms of getting property as it became available. And I could go on and on, but I won't. I'll just say that our other boards have gone into physical altercations. We never came to that. You know, we were each able to speak our mind, and like I said, we disagreed. We had 1-4-3 votes that I remember, but for the most part, the votes were the 6-1 or 7-0. We tried to come to a consensus, and I think the town, as well as the rest of the board, owes your voter thanks for all the hard work you've done. So, thank you.
Thank you, Marty.
And that's the end of the comments.
Okay. Well, thank you for making those comments. I appreciate it. Anyone else? Yeah, Lonnie and Erica.
I participated in an interview with a graduate student at the CU Anshut School of Public Health and her mentor for her capstone project with which focused on Carbondale's passage of the flavored tobacco ban amendments. Really cool, the little Carbondale was recognized as a primary driver that influenced our valleywide adaptation of that legislation. The highlights centered, of course, around public health concerns, our decision-making process, and concluding with the formation of the Youth and Family Advisory Council funded by the uptick in local tobacco tax. I expect to be receiving a copy of the paper next month that I can share with the board at that time. The hope is that this work might somehow influence the completion of House Bill 1319, the state-sponsored flavored tobacco ban that's been parked since the end of 2020. And preparing for this reminded me that this was one of the first initiatives that I participated with when I joined the board four years ago. Special thanks go to Kathy Derby for quickly collecting the records of prior vaping and flavored tobacco proceedings for me to refresh my poor memory. So, yay Carbondale.
Thank you, Lonnie.
Yep.
Erica.
Yeah, I've got a couple things. So I've been busy with CC4CA, which is Colorado Communities for Climate Action. I submitted an opinion piece in the Colorado Sun with Councilwoman Kendra Black a couple weeks ago. And it was regarding a bill that hadn't been introduced yet called the Plastics Producer Responsibility Act, I think. And it's, the whole idea is that we need to also lean on the producers of plastic to chip in and help us deal with plastics in our communities, you know, to increase recycling. So it's a really, it's got broad support from a whole variety of communities. And then I also, it got introduced on Thursday night, and so I testified on Thursday at midnight and thankful for hybrid meetings that they're still doing at the legislature, because a lot of my counterparts were there waiting in person. Because the two prior items, they started their meeting at 1:30 and had over 300 public comment that they had to get through on the two other bills. And then there were 100 of us on this bill. So that was interesting. And then the other topic that they've asked me to testify on in a couple different areas and represent our community is the advanced clean truck rulemaking that's going through the Colorado Department of Transportation rulemaking process. And then it's also now coming in front of the AQCC, which is the Air Quality Control Commission. And so that one is coming up next week. I'll be testifying at that one as well. And so just wanted to, in all of those, I'm representing all of you and our community in all of our all the work and as we heard from all of our residents during the election, the continued prioritization of addressing climate. And then tomorrow, for the Chamber and the Tourism Council, I'll be attending a rebranding session. And they're really taking a step back, as is Governor Polish just announced, the whole statewide tourism council. Instead of it being promote, 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 how can we all do more in our communities to manage tourism? And what does that look like? And so Rainy Day Design is hosting a rebranding session. I think it's a four-hour meeting or something. So I'm gonna go to that. And just to be part of that. And then on Thursday is also then the Chamber meeting this week. But mainly wanted to make sure folks know that the Tourism Council, they're not ignoring the impacts of tourism on our community. And they're definitely trying to rethink how they spend those funds that they receive.
Nice.
That's encouraging. Thank you.
Yep.
Yep. I just have a quick question. I thought that word would stage it past something that the lodging tax did not have to be strictly for lodging, or is that something that's pending?
I would have to look closer at the state ruling.
I think that's for their specific income, not like for other communities, the way I understood it anyway.
No, I thought this was a statewide.
Maybe I misunderstood it.
Okay, maybe I misunderstood. I'll do some more research.
Because I think it's our local tax, so therefore we can spend it however we want.
Yeah, but you used to have the lodging tax on tourism.
Because that's what our voters said it would be.
But they were saying, the way I understood it was that you could use it for affordable housing projects.
That's correct. You're all right.
Comes the voice from above.
So, so the governor's office was at the conference I was at last week, and yeah.
Awesome.
Yeah, so the state bill basically cleared the way that all lodging tax locally can now be spent on what they call the impacts of tourism. So it doesn't necessarily define affordable housing, but with that being an impact of tourism, you can now spend it on promotion or the impacts of tourism.
Well, that's good to know. I didn't know there were state requirements on that ballot.
Yeah, it was a pretty huge bill, actually. It was like a little cheer.
Thank you, Heather.
Sure.
Thanks, Heather. While you have the floor, Heather, any, any comments?
Yes. Yeah, so mostly all around affordable housing. So I went to the Colorado Mountain Housing Coalition annual meeting last Friday, which was fantastic, frankly. So I'll circulate a few resources for folks to kind of take a look at some of the presentations that occurred last week, but we, you know, we had everything from you know, our folks pretty close by over in Eagle County and how they're doing things under their nonprofit umbrella, which is essentially their, you know, arm of the Eagle County Housing Authority. And a lot of the different kind of pieces of the puzzle that they're employing over there. So you know, everything from additional down payment assistance to buy down programs to and so these are like voluntary buy down programs. People volunteer to put their free market unit up and into this program and can be essentially bought down right now, indeed restricted even before they sell it. So that's a hugely successful program that they're getting in place. They're doing cash offer, basically equal cash offer program. So if a buyer is coming in and they're up against a cash offer from investors, et cetera, the Valley Home Store will, you know, pony up the cash basically and then resell it to that, to the local buyer that might not be able to come up with a cash offer. So they just got a whole laundry list of programs. So that was great. We also heard from the state regarding our sort of buckets of money that are being teed up to come out and how they anticipate distributing that money. There are some long awaited thresholds in these bills that we have always hoped for. So you know, instead of trying to sit there and gnash their teeth about how to define affordability and all these things, they just said, you know, we're gonna loosen this up. And so some of the buckets of money around both the grants and the low interest, low interest financing are gonna go all the way up to 150% AMI. And so that's really huge. Because, you know, under CHAF and low income tax credit, you know, we were really stuck pretty much at 80% and just had this big gap in funding for what's been coined the missing middle. So, yeah, so it was great. There were a lot of other pieces there. On our Housing Coalition, just very quickly, we're getting pretty close to recording our documents with the Secretary of State that'll pretty much put in place our affordable housing nonprofit in the coalition. So at this point, everybody from, you know, Glenwood to Aspen is on board. And so as soon as we're recorded with the Secretary of State, we'll designate kind of a board of directors and be off to the races. So the focus of this group at this point is to look at the immediacy of the money that's coming out from the state and how this group can make sure that they help all the municipalities up down the valley, you know, leverage, leverage that money into projects, hopefully.
Great. Thanks, Heather. That's encouraging stuff.
Yeah. Thanks.
Anybody else? Bowden, anything exciting to report from school?
Nothing much. I mean, we're, we're about four and a half weeks away from graduation, so that's exciting. Rams Day, but nothing much, really.
All right, and I understand there'll be a project graduation again this year and.
Yep. I don't know what's happening.
Businesses can expect requests for further sponsorships and.
Probably, yeah.
And we welcome volunteer support as a member of the committee to make that happen. All right, thanks, Bowden. Anybody else? I got a couple. Erica, along your lines, I too co-penned a guest column on behalf of the town encouraging the PUC to expedite the closure of Comanche III, which has kind of been a nightmare from the start. It's more expensive than other alternatives and it's just not operational. So it's not providing cost effectiveness or reliability. So I too want to thank Kathy and all clerks in our valley. I think this valley in particular, Carbondale especially, does a fantastic job with elections. And as we've seen recently, that's not always true around the country. So in order for us to do that successfully, it takes a lot of dedication, patience, courage, effort. So thank you, Kathy, and thank you to all your judges. Thank you all the candidates, again, who threw their hat in the ring. That's not very easy either. So thank you for putting yourself out there. Also, thanks to staff and particular planning and zoning for the Chart Carbondale event. I think it was the, the final opportunity to provide public comment to our comprehensive plan update. And I thought it was a great idea that planning and zoning members actually conducted that meeting and it was pretty well attended. And I was just really impressed with planning and zoning, talking through the issues. And I thought it was a great way to end. So I appreciate all the efforts that have gone into that over the many, many months. And that's all I had. Lauren, do you have any comments?
I have, I have a couple of things. First of all, we've had some conversations about the soon to be vacated seat occupied by Ben at the moment. And just want to make a couple of comments about the process. The application for appointment as a trustee is up on the website. It's on the Facebook page. It was translated and went to, I believe, KDNK and so Sun today.
Great.
And the timeframe for that is that the application is due, I think it's by close of business on April noon, on April 28th. And then those persons who have applied will be invited to the May 10th Board of Trustees meeting to be interviewed and possibly to have the board vote to fill the vacancy. But we have until the last meeting in May to get that appointment done without the need for a special election. The other thing that I have just to remind the board and, and the new members of the board, which I suppose we should, I thought maybe they would be here. The CML Conference is in Breckenridge in June. I believe it's 21, 22, 23 or 23 through 24. I'm not sure, but it's that, that week, starting on Tuesday evening and running till Friday. We do have a couple of hotel rooms booked. Right now, the only people that I know of who are attending are Ben and myself, but there is space for other trustees or staff members to attend if desired. But if we're not gonna use those hotel rooms, we probably should let them go so that they're available for other people.
We can just sign the new board members up since they're not here tonight.
Just volunteer them.
It would be, I mean, I would highly encourage those new board members to attend. Okay, Mark, any comments?
No, the person's present here tonight.
Okay, all right. Well, thanks for everybody's updates. We'll move on to item number six. Special event liquor license for the Blue Lake Preschool. All right.
Those darn preschoolers want to drink booze.
Yes, good evening. Drew Saranzen from Little Blue Preschool, right down the street from you guys, and also Blue Lake Preschool Incorporated, the schools. We're really, really excited. We're hosting this fundraiser again. We've been hosting it for 15 years, but not the last two years, which was trouble for us from a financial standpoint. But we're just mostly excited that we can have an event, invite the whole community back into, you know, supporting the preschool. So, yeah, it's a big event. Lots of donations from companies up and down the valley, Denver and further, to create these amazing private packages, a big raffle, silent auction, and then tons and tons of food from local restaurants. So if any of you guys are free on May 13th, please stop by. We've got tickets for sale at both of the schools. And 100% of the profit goes to the preschool, supporting the teachers, supporting the children. And as I'm sure a lot of you are aware, kind of supporting the preschool and our expansions to kind of take care of the issue of childcare in the valley. So all of that goes right to that. So happy to answer any other questions and invite you guys to come.
So raffle tickets are available at the preschool?
Yes, absolutely. Lots of different places around. Alpine Bank has stacks of them. So, yeah. Yep, Erica at the Carbondale Branch, Dan Marcoya at the Basalt Branch, I believe, and Jenny Sauer also at the Basalt Branch for sure have some. But if you ask, they can direct you to the right place.
Having won the raffle once, I encourage everyone to buy raffle tickets. The price was like a $3,000 condo in Kauai.
Yes. This year it is a six-night stay in the Dominican Republic and $1,000 cash to get there. So, yes, not too shabby.
And the money goes to the.
Drew, thanks for coming tonight. Any questions of Drew? You guys know the drill and just, I don't think you've been before us since you completed it, but the building looks great.
Thank you.
I did my walk by inspections on a daily basis throughout the whole project. Guys did a heck of a job, so thank you.
Yeah, thank you to all the builders on that one. So, yeah.
Okay, Kathy, anything else you want to add on this one?
Perfect.
Okay.
Thank you guys so much.
Well, we gotta vote first. You can sit down. Heather, any, any comments? I can't see it. Oh, no, no, there you are. Okay. All right. I'd entertain a motion.
I'd move to approve the liquor license for Blue Lake Preschool fundraiser on May 13th. Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Erica, seconded by Lonnie. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Oppose say no. Motion passes. Thanks, Drew.
Thanks so much.
All right, moving on to item number seven is a special, special liquor license for Wilderness Workshop. Not seen anybody here from Wilderness Workshop. I've not seen anybody here from Wilderness Workshop.
Hi there, can you all hear me?
We can. Welcome, Beverly.
Hi, hi, thank you for having me. My name's Beverly Patera. I'm Operations Manager for Wilderness Workshop. And we are again hosting our annual community party in Sopris Park this year, a little bit early on Friday, June third, first Friday, um hoping to gather some some more community members who might not know about us and and would like to learn a little bit more about our organization and what we do to protect public lands in the valley. And so this event is free and open to the public as always. We'll have live music from the Confluence, as well as another band that's still coming together. We'll have a food truck. Um, the Rolling Fork Food Truck will be there on site. And we'll also have, excuse me, a bounce house for the kids. We're looking to source a magician, a juggler of sorts for some more entertainment. And um, yeah, we're we're just looking forward to this great community event.
All right. Well, thank you. Um, any questions?
No.
Okay, and you guys have done this many times. Um, I'd entertain a motion.
I would move to approve the liquor license for Wilderness Workshop um for their event on June third. Second.
All right, motion by Erica, second by Lonnie. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose say no. Motion passes. Beverly, thanks for joining us and good luck with the event.
Thank you all very much.
All right, now we're moving on to item number eight, award of yard waste contract. Welcome, Kevin.
Hello.
Hello.
So back in February, the board directed that we go out and solicit proposals for the yard waste collection that uh we've done for the last couple of years from May to September. We did that and we got two proposals back, one from Evergreen Zero Waste and one from Mountain Waste and Recycling. Um, just a reminder that it was not strictly a cost-based proposal. There were criteria outside of costs that were considered in that uh evaluation. There's a lot of information in the packet and I'm happy to talk in detail about anything that anybody would like to. But the short version of the story and the results were that while Evergreen Zero Waste had a slightly higher cost than Mountain Waste did, when you took all of the other items into consideration, it was a very close proposal. And we are recommending that we there that the board award the contract to Evergreen Zero Waste based on those other criteria. So um, there's questions, more details you want?
Kevin, would you, thank you. Um, I I always trust you implicitly in in assessments like this. And so I'm sure you um are very thoughtful, um and objective. Um, can you give us a couple of highlights of what what you think might be different with the if we were awarded to Evergreen as opposed to Mountain Waste, any anything that stood out?
You know, I I think Evergreen put a lot of thought into how they're going to do the program. One of the things that impressed me is I I think everybody recognizes kind of the size difference between the companies. But, you know, the contingency planning, if this piece of equipment doesn't work, this is how we do it. And I was very impressed by that thought process. Um, I think the ability to engage the public will be as good or better than Mountain Waste has done in the past, and that is not a slam on Mountain Waste. We just um it the proposal made it very apparent how dedicated Evergreen Zero Waste is to the um organic side, reducing the amount of material going to the landfill. You know, I one of the things that was in the proposal that I thought would be worth talking about from Evergreen was this concept of, you know, kind of completing the circle. People are showing up there to drop off their organic yard waste. But maybe sometimes we have the finished product, which is the compost, back there for them. Drop off your yard waste and pick up some compost. I thought that was a good idea, so. I I don't know if that answers your question.
It does, but thank you. Any other questions of Kevin? I see we have at least one of the applicants here. Any questions of Dave or Alyssa? Okay, um, I'd entertain a motion.
Well, first, I'd like to thank Kevin and staff for taking the time and doing the diligence to go through this. I know that was kind of a last-minute thing. And um, you know, if um Kevin, you know, like Dan, I trust you a lot. And if you have seen no programmatic or logistical challenges with um the Mountain Waste proposal, I mean the um zero-waste proposal, Evergreen Zero Waste proposal, then um I'm ready to make a motion.
Go for it.
I would then move to approve and authorize the mayor to execute the attached agreement with Evergreen Zero Waste for yard waste drop site collection.
All right, thank you, Lonnie. Uh, we have a motion by Lonnie, seconded by Luis. All those in favor say aye. Oppose say no. Thank you, Kevin. Congratulations, Dave and Alyssa.
Ask one clarifying question, just for members of the public who might not look at the packet and the price difference. It looks like that came down to Mountain Waste reducing their labor cost by more than half of what they've been paying.
Correct.
Okay.
That that was a big component of it.
Yeah, just if anybody asks why, you know, it's unusual for us to award a contract to somebody who bids slightly higher. Um, it looks to me like they were going to absorb the rest of that to to under, you know, to get their price down. Like it didn't look like a real difference in in cost. It looked like a moving things around sort of thing, so.
But the other thing I would add to that is wh- when you're looking at th- this, there is a there is a difference in the proposals that we just received. But had you chosen to go with just renewing the contract, the prices would have been very, very similar.
And when we first awarded this contract, you know, there were many other factors that there some handful of other factors that we considered beyond cost, and that's unique to this. There were there were other goals that we had in mind and the same is true for this contract. So that's why we didn't just look at price.
Yep.
Thanks. Okay. Thank you, guys. All right, um, we're rolling through the agenda. Um, item number nine, Fourth Street Rio Grande Trail Public Street Crossing Application. Hello, hello. Hello again. Like there's a song about that. Anyway, um. Must you not to?
He definitely should sing.
So this item is related to the crossing right outside of Town Hall. Um, prior to two thousand and two, that was considered a private crossing because Mer- or the extension of Fourth Street didn't go all the way up to Merrill Avenue. And in two thousand and two, the section from the trail to Merrill Avenue was needed to the town as part of a development in the industrial park. Rail or railroad right-of-way owners have the ability to grant private crossings at their discretion, but public crossings of railroad corridors need to be approved by the Public Utilities Commission. That never happened. So as part of Rafta's diligence in management of their right-of-way, you know, this item came up. And I, Angela approached me and said, hey, why don't we get this cleaned up? And I wholeheartedly agree with her on that. Um, Rafta's going to prepare the application, so this item, it needs to be a joint application between the owner of the right-of-way and the people crossing it. So that's kind of why we're asking for the authority for the mayor to sign whatever documents are necessary for that application. Probably the biggest benefit that I can see to this long term. And I emphasize long term because what I'm about to say, I know can be contentious for some folks. But this really is going to relate to the potential extension of Industry Way over Eighth Street at some point in time. When that happens, that will have to be a new application to the Public Utilities Commission. And they're going to look at the corridor and they're going to go, well, why would we give you this when you don't have a legal public crossing down at Fourth Street where this corridor extends? So I think that's one of the bigger advantages to doing this. If anybody has any questions, I'll try to answer them, but that's this is kind of housekeeping that needs to be done.
Any questions? This is on the Rafta agenda on Thursday, so it should be finalized. Uh, all right, I don't think this is public hearing. Nope. Uh, I'd entertain a motion.
I'll move to authorize the mayor to execute documents necessary to file a joint application with Rafta to the Colorado Public Utilities Commission to convert the Fourth Street Crossing of Rafta Right-of-Way to a public crossing.
Second.
All right, we have a motion by Lonnie and a seconded by Erica. All those in favor say aye.
Marty.
Oh, by Marty.
Gee. He looks just like me.
Motion by Lonnie, seconded by Marty. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Okay, motion passes. Yeah.
So you have to sign that twice, once with this mayor and once as a Rafta administrator?
I'm not the chair of Raft anymore, so I only have to sign it once. Half the work. So, um, all right, thank you, Kevin. Goodbye. Fun to tease him. All right, uh, item number ten is kind of a random one. Um, really, the only reason I wanted on the on the on the agenda tonight is I didn't know when Ben would reassign jobs. But since uh, well, Heather and I are both um coming off, I at least wanted to give anyone the opportunity to attend the E-Board meeting next Monday. Um, if there's anyone and you, you know, maybe these guys can have first dibs of of joining any uh committees, but um, yeah, I think it was really just a reminder to to have people think about it. But is there anybody who would like to definitely want to join the E-Board and you can attend Monday? If not, I'll continue to attend. Not seen any hands.
You're not done yet now.
All right, um, Heather, what other what other boards are you on?
Uh, I think without, yeah, without the E-Board, uh, that's it if I'm staying on the um Coalition for now.
Right, okay. All right, well, just maybe I was just trying to get rid of my duties prematurely, okay. All right, never mind. I was also trying to kill a little time because we're almost an hour uh early for the COVID Emergency Task Force. And I'm uh wondering, so um we'll close out item number ten and we'll take a break. Uh, let's take a ten-minute break to six fifty-five and um I'll let people know we're ahead of schedule. Okay, so we'll see everybody back here at six fifty-five. Recession. Okay. Okay, great.
Ren just signed.
Great. And then we have Scott Kirk here. Um. Guess that's it. All right, Amy's not going to make it. Sarah Jane's not going to make it. Never heard back from Justin. We did? Okay. Just made a phone call. I need to online.
I did see it online.
Did you see the the logo and the little blurb?
Um. No.
Oh. Actually, no, this week. So the blurb is there and then next to last page. Donors.
Oh.
Give me two.
Yeah.
It'll be, did you see one of the the two, two, um, here, I'll show you, two, two fly fishing guys that I think will be there for that.
I saw the one, um, I think.
Rhonda.
He's, he's a chef.
We'll have a discussion.
Sure.
Thank you.
Nice. He's got a big fish. I'm going to go test some flies. Liz was saying, well, we should just use a real flying. Oh, Elon. I know Elon. He's on Wildlife Council. He's one of the, um, not students, but what do you call him? He's a like an RA kind of a thing.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, so he's coming.
Is he? Awesome.
Yeah, it's filmed, well, it's filmed with, uh, Oris, isn't it? All jokes aside.
Oh.
So he's on a, he's on a, one of the panels with me and talk about you voices, first, first, first perspective. So I'm excited. I'm excited to meet him and met him yet.
Yeah, he's one of our outreach people. That's what you call it, an outreach person.
Yeah.
Oh, sorry.
He was just in Alaska, so.
Was he?
Yeah.
He does a lot of things with kids. Principally, yeah. Oh, that's cool. Okay, I'll have to make sure I wear my Wildlife Council hat. I've got my my sticker.
I think so. I think so.
Excited and nervous all at the same time.
That, that's you and me both.
I think it's going to be awesome. Fingers crossed, right?
Should have some nice weather too.
It looks like it.
After, after today, I was like, oh my God, or yesterday, and I'm like.
So we thought, okay, so we can either put Liz's suggestion of flying on there with notebook, of course. Or we can just put a feather on there. So the slightest little breeze will send the tipet fluttering down and give more people a chance to just
You guys are the experts.
And I confused all the time. Yeah. Yeah.
I don't know what I'm thinking. Wow, this is, well, I'm packing on the 26th to sign, but.
And it's not your place, it's different companies. Have you ever done like a ride along with, with any of those?
That's, yeah, it's true. I forgot.
And then like certainly, because of flight surgeon on these things, to me, they're, I mean, it's in the air, in the dark.
Yes, sir.
Congratulations, but Mr. Xwan is running for governor.
Yeah.
It's not getting endorsed, but I'm there too.
He's not. I didn't read that. I didn't hear that.
Oh, it's way weird.
Yeah. Oh, yeah.
Totally straight down the middle.
Oh, good. Yeah.
So the only, I think it's
Yeah, he's drawing a hard line that if you don't endorse the idea, it can't be in the store. This is my Holly's cousin who's running for governor. I went on a hike with him when he was out here last fall and we talked a lot about it. And he was appointed by Trump as the Attorney General. So that's I'm happy with what he did. All right. All right. Last item of business tonight is item number 11, our COVID Emergency Task Force Discussion. And I know we have, uh, PC Drew, Chief Wilson. Uh, on Zoom, we have Andrea Stewart, Rin Calhoun. And it looks like that might be it. The purpose of tonight's discussion is twofold. I wanted to recognize the members of the, of the, at least the the leaders of the lines of effort. There were way too many people involved to, to recognize everybody. Um, but then also talk about what does the task force look like moving forward? But before we get to item number two, I want to, um, just touch on, I, I want to recognize and acknowledge everybody on the task force. Jeez, I, I didn't even think about the time, but it must have been in March when I was, PC, you reached out to me, um, and suggested this idea. And I have to admit, it took a little bit of convincing, you know? I, I had no idea what we were getting into. I didn't know what we were going to need and I sure as heck didn't know how we were going to address things. But PC, who, um, is a reservist and has a significant amount of military experience, proposed this framework, um, that had eight lines of effort. One was health, economy, strategic communications, human capital, finance, technology, advocacy and crisis response. And because I was not in the military, I thought, wow, this is pretty robust. But looking back two years later, it was so ideal for the, for the, um, for the circumstances at hand, I just didn't recognize it. So not only do I really want to recognize PC, you know, uh, PC, I want you to come up here in a little bit. But I also want to recognize the effort that it took just to sort of wake me up and, uh, and bring me into the discussion. So I really appreciate your, your efforts, um, PC. The, the other leaders of the lines of effort, uh, included Andrea Stewart, who ran the economy, uh, aspect of it. Uh, Andrea was incredibly organized and thoughtful and was always ahead of the game in communicating to the businesses. She probably had a perfect attendance record for all of our meetings, which was weekly for a long time, sometimes more than once a week. Uh, so Andrea, thank you very much. Um, we had, uh, Rin Calhoun, who joined us um, a little bit late, but she made up for it with her tireless, uh, effort and her compassion towards the community. Um, she was just so dedicated to finding testing, you know, the testing solutions. She was coming up with ways for us to test the community long before the state was and was advocating for the town to, um, do as much as we could. Uh, likewise with vaccines. And she, she too had a perfect record and was just communicating on a regular basis. She also had, provided a really good link to Valley View Hospital and the physicians at Valley View. And so Rin, thank you for all of your efforts. Um, we had Sarah Jane Johnson, head of strategic communications. This was before we had a consultant at the town. Communications obviously was a critical link in this. Uh, we needed to communicate many different things in many different ways. And Sarah Jane just, um, again, was very patient. She was resourceful, constantly, um, willing to write press releases and some press releases that nobody ever saw because we were thinking about things um, and preparing for things. So Sarah Jane couldn't join us tonight, but I really appreciate, um, what she brought to the table. Human capital, and as you think about that in Carbondale, who else but Amy Kimberly, um, ran that line of effort? And I don't think anybody in Carbondale has ever been as, as successful as Amy in rallying the troops. She has an amazing ability to, uh, to tap resources and she did during the task force as well. And from her efforts, other things, um, came to fruition like the, uh, neighborhood heroes. And, um, she coordinated with other, um, volunteers who began making masks before masks were readily available. And, you know, just Amy worked her magic. So thank you to Amy. Um, finance, we had Renee Gustine, our finance director here in Carbondale and, you know, this is another thing that PC had the foresight to know what we needed to cover, but, um, how is the pandemic going to impact, uh, the town government? And what funds would we be able to access in order to help? Um, fund some of the, um, I guess you could call them opportunities that became available. Um, and so Renee worked, you know, kind of above and beyond her day job to participate. So thank you, Renee. With technology, um, we had Justin from, who, Justin's not part of CoVenture, but he was, um, he's part of the, I think it's Roaring Fork Technologists. Um, really creative during the pandemic. He worked with, uh, you know, as part of his day job, developing an app, um, that would help connect resources. Uh, and it was just amazing that we had this resource right here in the, in, actually in the Crystal Valley. Um, but he too was a great resource and connected us and was able to answer questions about can we do that or can we do that? Advocacy, Erica Sparhawk. Um, Erica, as we hear on a on a weekly basis, is very connected around the state. Certainly, uh, throughout the community and there were various things where we were trying to advocate at the state level um, for, um, testing, for vaccines. I mean, it's, it's amazing now to look back like how hard it was to, to get to that phase. But Erica was just incredibly resourceful. Um, I think you two had a pretty perfect attendance record and just poured a ton of time into it. So thank you, Erica. Of course, we had our crisis response team, our former uh, chief of police, Gene Schilling, was involved. And as we all know, Gene is, uh, kind of the king of resourcefulness. Fortunately, we didn't necessarily have a local crisis as we know them to be with fires and things. And so, um, but Gene was great at, at pooling resources together. And then when Gene retired and Kirk took over, um, Kirk was, uh, very attentive and, uh, supportive and all the things that we needed to talk about with respect to our police department. I also want to recognize Jay Harrington. Jay, obviously our former town manager was very involved. Uh, he did so much behind the scenes, uh, in terms of coordinating the town's efforts, uh, the emergency declaration, getting DOLA funding, uh, setting up the communications. He was primary contact with Sarah Jane on communications. And he, he too went above and beyond his day job and, and helped make a lot of it happen. As I reflect back on this, it was clearly, um, a shining moment for the community, um, because of how we responded. And when I say we, I mean the community, right? It was to me, a fantastic demonstration of compassion. We had our neighborhood heroes who were going out, making sure people were okay, figuring out, um, ways to to get food to people or whatever they needed. There was courage in a lot of different ways in supporting people and challenging me and others to say, we need to do this, um, right now. There was a strong will. We were putting a ton of time into the effort and, uh, all the people I mentioned, plus many, many more just kept pounding the pavement, if you will, to make it happen. Um, extraordinary organization and cooperation between a lot of different agencies. Carbondale Arts and the Chamber and the Town. Our, um, Parks and Rec Department, I completely forgot um, their role in being a hotline and Jesse and crew just being available. So great cooperation. PC's vision to, to make this happen early on before we even knew how bad it was going to be. And the energy to, to pull it all off. So, um, I, um, I just really want to say thank you. I'm glad PC's here and, um, PC, I welcome uh, your thoughts on the event before we, we, on the, uh, on the events that occurred, but, um, just from the bottom of my heart, thank you for all you've done for Carbondale. So, thank you.
Good to see everybody in person. We never once met in person as a task force, despite how much I wanted to make that happen in like some big grassy open field or whatever. There were some really important takeaways that, that I think were unique to the situation, but also unique to the character of the town and the town's position within the valley. There are so many people here with so much knowledge, so many resources, so much access. And this was about pulling all of that together under a unified vision and, and really to, to help the, the community itself. So we called it a whole of community approach. Because we recognized that the things that the, the town government could do could and couldn't do because of its limitations and its charter and all of that, uh, could be augmented by things that the community could and couldn't do. So under the unified vision, I think we were able to deliver some amazing things. For example, Manaus, uh, through La Medici delivered $3.2 million in individual payments to individual citizens, like people here, I shouldn't even say citizens, to humans in this valley and all the way through to, to parachute and whatnot. $3.2 million in a town of 6,000 or so people was able to be distributed out in a thousand dollar increments. Like that, I, I, I can't stop thinking about how impactful that was to people that had no access to money or food. If any of you all went out to the Lift Up Lines, you know, Lift Up was, is, is an amazing organization that's here all the time and they're going to be here long after we pass through, the lines for the, the free food that they were offering were around the block, like the police set up different, you know, routes so that the, the lines didn't impact traffic as much, but still people could get through. Each and every one of these hallmarks was, um, because of the, all the people that chipped in. Andrea's, uh, support through the chamber and access to the businesses and getting them support. So I think there's a lot of takeaways from this and I don't know that we did a full lessons learned or kind of capturing all of that, which might be a good thing for, for maybe me to take on. I didn't want to come away with an action item. But that might be a good thing for me to take on and kind of report back to you all of like, these are the things that, that we did and you know, hundreds of people involved in this whole process. So I, I think that there are definitely aspects that can be maintained and I think that there's aspects that, that have been here. So Andrea's involvement with the chamber and the town is a very strong link. And that was a big piece why she was easy to reach out to and easy to, to participate and, and a strong leader from the very beginning. Carbondale Arts happens to have a very strong relationship with the town staff and government already. You know, maybe a lesson learned is taking the, the other nonprofits in the area, especially the ones that serve the Latinx community and, and, you know, broader beyond that and building a, a strong link there like with Manaus. You know, how can we as a town leverage different sources of funding and different ability to execute on those sources of funding to achieve a, a unified vision? The advocacy piece was huge. It's kind of the unsung hero of a lot of this. It's, it's the, it was the voice out beyond the town, you know? How can we push the county commissioners to make decisions that we think are, are appropriate and maybe, uh, not the norm for a county to decide, but you know what? This, this requires something beyond the norm, like, um, pausing evictions. Um, that was a, a, a big, uh, fear of ours is that, you know, if we don't do something now, this is going to be a big problem down the road. And creating a stance that we felt was human oriented, but not the norm for a small town government to, to take and step forward and lead the way and push that up to the county and the state. So I think that there's, there's a lot of room on the advocacy side to say, this is how we think we should do business and pushing that up and out beyond the, the town. That's my, my spiel so far. Um, since this is a discussion, I'd love to hear other people's thoughts.
Um, I also, I, I was remiss in recognizing Sydney. And Sydney Shalit, who's executive director of Manaus Fund. Um, it became pretty clear that we just couldn't not have her as part of the task force. And as PC mentioned, the La Medici Fund was a game changer for many, many community members. Um, and Sydney was, uh, like And Sidney was, like many of the leads, was just tireless in her support. She strongly advocated for the town to make contributions, which we did through the community foundation. So I'm sorry, I didn't recognize Sidney before. I also wanted to give Rin and Andrea or Rin or Andrea an opportunity to offer thoughts on, on the task force. So Rin or Andrea, any, any thoughts you want to offer before we get into the discussion of what's next?
Sure, I'll just chime in. Thank you for having me and for just having this open dialogue. I agree. It was time well spent. We did spend many hours together. And I think too, it really put a humbling perspective on everything that we were being faced with, you know, locally. So just appreciate everyone coming together and the open communication and the raw communication. I think, you know, it really brought a lot of us closer, especially as we could, you know, kind of see life happening behind the camera lens. And I agree, you know, I definitely think there's some future framework and I am definitely interested in being a part of that in any way that we can. We also learned some lessons and, you know, to have people kind of in succession, just in case, you know, one person were to get sick or needed some time off, that someone could just step in and could really help out. And with that, we're also, we've created a Roaring Fork Valley Destination Alliance with all of our destination partners throughout the valley. We actually just met today and are working on a number of different items in the tourism industry. And one of those being crisis communication and kind of coming out of this task force. So we can add to the list in regards to who and when. And we can really just implement and deploy those lists and communication as needed. So thanks for all of your efforts and Dan, thank you for your time. We really appreciate all that you put into this and really bringing us together. So thanks.
Thanks Andrea. What did you, what did you call that new coalition, Roaring Fork Valley?
Destination Alliance.
Destination Alliance, okay.
And I can send you some information. We just have a press release on it. And I'll, I'll send that over just so you can kind of see who the partners are.
Great, thank you.
Sure.
Rin, thank you for joining us.
I would just kind of echo that and, oh, I guess my, I don't know, I don't see my, where I can release my, somehow I got my video got turned off. But just to say that I was really impressed at how quickly this team came together and became very functional very rapidly, you know? So often when teams or committees come together, they have to get to know each other in norm and form and storm and all that. Well, you know, people hit the ground running and hadn't, like PC said, had never, many had never met face to face. It was very impressive. So Dan's leadership and PC's facilitation was wonderful. There also, I agree, there were some opportunities for improvement. I think the neighborhood heroes definitely got the word out. It was great to do that, carry the, you know, carry the message out and put signs, tape them on people's windows. We couldn't go in, but I made friends from across a threshold, you know, met neighbors. And, but I think not only for an emergent situation like that, but just in general, there may, we may have opportunity to improve not only outgoing communication, but incoming communication. What else is going on in the community that maybe we're not even aware of, that people need us to attend to? And, and how can we, how can we do that? Some creative ways to do that. It was a great honor to be part of this group and I, I hope it continues.
Kirk, I don't know if you want to offer any thoughts. I don't mean to exclude you.
I would, I would love to echo what Rin just said. I came in as an outsider in June of 2020 with a background in law enforcement and a slight background in emergency management. And what other municipalities were struggling and scrambling to do was make relationships with organizations that they needed to have relationships right then, right there. Walking in the door here, one of the first things that I, Gene had me do is participate with the task force. And I just sat there quietly and in awe because all of the relationships were already in place. This is a community that cares. This is a community that is incredibly resilient and incredibly adaptive. Because when needs were being, when, when someone on this task force was saying, we need to do X, Y, and Z, there was somebody there on that task force that was able to do whatever, whatever was needed quickly. And I was so impressed from coming from those backgrounds that everything was already in place. The relationships were already built. And, and you, it's very difficult to start from scratch in the middle of chaos. And I, Rin, you're so right with, with how well that went. And PC did an amazing job of putting it together and kudos to Oodaloope.
To who?
Oodaloope. Observe, Orient, Decide, and Act. That's a very military slash law enforcement way of looking at things.
Okay. Yeah, I, I, I tried to praise PC so much for his vision, but also the facilitation and, and storing all the documents and just being out there with Lift Up and just the list goes on and on. So PC is the hero of the task force for sure.
Dan, can I just add?
Question thoughts? Yeah. Oh, sure, of course.
So I just wanted to share, to put some perspective on it. We got PC's email with this idea on March 20th, 2020. As I recall, we all went into lockdown like on the 13th. And then we had our first meeting or he sent out our first meeting notes on 3/24. So four days later, we had had our first meeting of at least some group of us. And because of all the meeting notes, I can actually tell you who was there. But it was, it was for it being, for it happening so fast, it was so well facilitated of just getting it going. It was like, we're not going to let it be, it doesn't have to be perfect, but we need to start having these conversations. And I heard from other communities, when I was reaching out to other folks, I mean, the county was super appreciative of our task force because we were so organized in what we were asking. And we were, you know, we would go through Jay or I would reach out to Commissioner Jankowski. And so we weren't all yelling at them for everything we wanted to happen. It was really coordinated and they really appreciated that. And then just to back up what PC was saying, and I think I said this during the campaign a couple of times, but it was a huge lesson for me in that we do have all these experts in our community that we can tap for tackling problems or things that come up. And so our willingness to listen and follow up, and we could have ignored PC's email because things were totally hectic right then. But we didn't and our staff was open to it and our staff participated at multiple levels. And I think that says a lot about our organization as well. So I think it's kind of kudos all around for taking this really great idea and then just running with it. And I know a lot of communities were jealous, even front range communities were telling me that they had, you know, town staff or a town manager who was like, no, no, we got this. Nobody needs to tell me how to do this. And it was like, nobody knows how to do this. What do you, how do you, this is not a workshop at CML prior to 2020. So what do you mean you have it? So I just wanted to add that as my appreciation and some context, some history. Because those were crazy times.
Thank you, Erica. I might put Lauren on the spot, even though I didn't tell you I was going to do this. But since we're fortunate to have a town manager slash mayor from another town, any thoughts on, on, yeah, just any thoughts?
Well, the fact that I was not here for any of it, it's hard for me to really be able to compare and contrast. One of the things that I realized very early on, when I started hearing about the emergency task force, is that Carbondale did this without any mandates from any other government organization. In Connecticut, that did not happen that way. We had the Department of Emergency Management and Homeland Security all over it from day one. We still had to come up with the plan and the structure, but there, there were certain things that were mandated. And in, in many ways, it made us much less nimble and, and sometimes gotten away because of the bureaucratic piece of it. Having said that, we had a very similar organization. We called it our Long Term Recovery Committee because that's what the state mandated, mandated that we called it. And it also had very similar structure where we had a business piece and a health piece and a, you know, social services and food security and insecurity, insecurity advocacy, somebody up at the legislature and working with the, because we didn't have county government with the, with the council of governments. But I, I was thrilled to know that Carbondale had done this without the mandate in a way that seemed to really serve the whole community. You know, certain things that have been said here tonight really struck me because it's, it goes along with the way that I feel about how these particularly small communities operate, that they are human centered, that they are true holistic communities, that when in times of crisis, you know, I love the fact that you called them the hometown heroes. But frankly, that's when communities come together like a family would to support each other. And it looks like Carbondale did a fabulous job with that. I don't know what that structure would look like going forward. The fact that, that it's so new in the memory bank really leaves a lot of opportunity to think through that. Is it a contingent type organization that can really step up when needed? Or are there sort of everyday functions that you could have a smaller sort of skeleton crew working through and planning through, maybe meeting quarterly or what have you to, to look at the needs of the community? And then if there's a crisis, when there's a crisis, then they can expand accordingly. I, I'm not sure, but I, I think it's wonderful that Carbondale did this and that so many people were able to come together and really make a difference financially and otherwise.
Thanks, Laura. Any other thoughts before we move on to what the future could hold? When I thought about this and what do we do in the future? And I also want to credit PC probably within the first week or two, or probably the first conversation PC said. And by the way, I think this should be a permanent fixture that right now we have a pandemic, but this is something that's going to be needed in perpetuity. So he's been advocating for this since day one. I still like, I think the community proved me right in that the community really does things really well. And, and in general, the, the town is here to remove hurdles. In this case, the, the town did more than just remove hurdles. But how this lives in the future, I still think it's a hybrid approach. What I wouldn't want to see is that the community just looks to the town and says, okay, you guys now replicate that because it works so much better, in my opinion, because of the cooperation. With that said, I, I would love to see the town sort of adopt the framework as a, as a framework. And I don't mean that necessarily officially, but have it, have it ready whenever this happens again so that there's that institutional knowledge. If PC were to move out of town or all these people were to go, that the town is, is ready to hold that. There are, there are a few aspects. Obviously, if there was a crisis again, or when there's a crisis again, all of these are applicable. But there are a few things that I see are kind of applicable in perpetuity. And a few things that come to mind. And I guess I, I just thought I'd throw out some ideas with all the different lines of effort. With the economy, as, as PC alluded to, it just made sense for the chamber to be holding that. And so I think that's something that would, would kind of go on. And Andrea seems to be supportive of that notion. With strategic, wait, hold on. Likewise, with human capital, maybe Amy's unique, but Carbondale Arts seems to be one of those organizations that taps, taps the community pretty well. And so we have these partners that can kind of be on call, if you will. I think the strategic communications, we really struggled with that one at first because we, we didn't have a mechanism in place to communicate to all the different members of the community that we needed to communicate with. And I think, Ben, I know it's a priority of yours that we've talked about the Latino community and just continuing that. But I think thinking about the task force and business as usual as it relates to using the Manaus Fund or the Manaus Organization and Valley Settlement is, it seems as if, according to Sidney's email, that she's willing to really spearhead that. So I would like to see them be an integral part of that. One of the things that became really clear through the pandemic, and this is definitely not pointing fingers. It's really just being reflective on where we are is the disconnect between healthcare and public health. And that came from a doctor. So it's not like I'm pointing the finger. And I still don't know, I mean, we're all sort of recovering from the pandemic in terms of the impact it had. I don't think either of those industries have had an opportunity to, you know, reflect and, and catch. But I think that's an area that really needs to focus moving forward so that hopefully we're better prepared at the next one. I think for the town moving forward, what, what the town held in this is Erica, as a trustee, you are advocacy. I think that makes sense. I don't know if you were just so perfect and you happened to be a trustee. But it does seem to make sense that the town sort of holds that advocacy and, and other organizations can support in that. Renee, holding finance and fund distribution. Again, Sidney played a big part of that through the Manaus Fund. But Renee, you know, the, the town government has, has a huge role. And then strategic communications is, I guess I'm repeating myself on this one. But I think as, as our ability to communicate with the community continues to evolve, I think that makes sense. And Andrea, your, your comment about destination alliance, I don't know how, how that plays in, but I'm sure between Chief Wilson and you, I think that can dovetail nicely. But so anyway, those are my thoughts. I'm curious to hear what other trustees have to say or thoughts on how it could move forward. Marty?
Yeah, something where I think I want her to have the fire chief with us. I mean, this pandemic was a 1700 year plan, hopefully. But the threat of a forest fire is always with us. That would be one suggestion that I would make. And I'm sure they have their own emergency response, but making sure that everyone's coordinated and on the same page couldn't hurt anything.
Yeah, I think, I, I certainly don't disagree. But I think that's the, that's one of the areas where, you know, police, fire kind of have their, got to have it dialed. And if there was something like that, that came about during the pandemic, I would have been worried at all. But.
Dan, can I ask a question real quick?
Sure.
What was the, the coordination and relationship of the school district?
Good point. There wasn't a whole lot. And, and that's not like, only because school was closed. I think, PC, do you remember? Yeah, maybe you should.
They have food source?
So they, they had their own response task force, if you will, that they were working. And we coordinated through Anna Cole and, and kind of synced up where we could. Their issues that they were trying to solve were slightly different than ours. But having that alignment, trying to help where we could. Food was a big piece and understanding where they were sourcing their food for, from, how they were going to distribute it, linking them up with Lift Up and with other organizations. So some of those things were, were almost just, as Kirk said, like these relationships exist. And some people, like Marty is really well. And some people like Marty is really well connected and knows everybody. And so if he's there and has a voice and said, hey, did you talk to this person at this location? That bridge could be built. So some of that was just conversations and sharing contacts so that those those people or those organizations could move ahead.
We we had a very big coordinated effort between the schools and the and the our task force. Because we were dealing with getting kids' computers, getting families internet so that they could continue in school. And the food piece and, you know, there were, there were all kinds of mixtures there. So that's why I asked.
Yeah, and and an example of that, on the finance side of things, we had Sydney and Renee working together. So organizationally, it was a a public funding person and a private funding person, if you will, working together to identify funding sources that that came with different constraints and who could execute that. So in in related to your example, USDA came out with a loan, or excuse me, grants for rural telecommunications, immediate needs for home assets, you know, a school district could then distribute that to make sure computers were given to people at home. We had six, I think, volunteers that were researching grant opportunities, identifying those and then passing them out to whomever could execute them. So in that case, that was school district. Hey, do you know this is available? No, we don't. We're on it. And, you know, then that they are able to to access that, I think it was like a hundred million dollar fund from USDA. So that's where some of those relationships were happening. And I think a piece of that was not really waiting for, on your earlier comment, not really waiting for the town to say, I do or don't have this authority. It was recognizing these things need to be done. The town has these authorities. And and we're going to move forward on that. And an aspect of the community can handle the things where there is no quote authority or mandate. And we just do the work.
Yeah, I want to clarify what I said there because it may be misconstrued. When I said there wasn't a lot, I just want to emphasize what PC said, it's because of the school district already was focused on a lot of things on on their own and separate, but cooperative. So thank you for clarifying that. Other thoughts? Lonnie?
To get back to your comment about the disconnect between healthcare and public health. And I was kind of in the middle of that throughout this thing, and this was a very unique situation in that nobody had any sense of what we were possibly dealing with. Vaccines did not exist. Testing was three weeks out. And the initial thought was that children would not be impacted. Well, over time, that evolved. And that completely swung a different direction. So there were so many aspects of this that had to be learned by all hands professionally or locally. When the disconnect between the healthcare and the public health impacts were realized, you know, it came down to rolling down to local economy and economic impacts, finance and the whole rest of it. So the LOEs were all, you know, lined in line with what was going to happen, which we didn't know. And that was the wild card, right? We had no idea if this was going to last for two years, five years or 10. So one of the things that we talk about within public health is that it would be beneficial. And there are some projects afoot that help educate the the local officials, whether it's at the county level, state level or local level on impacts of public health, whether it's with a pandemic, whether it's with drug abuse. Right now, there's a big motion or movement about trying to stop what is the new thing that's out there. Yeah. That, you know, perhaps something can be done to recognize that or identify it. So those are some of the things that kind of come to my mind, but it's, you know, it generally, when there's a crisis, it does revolve around personal loss, healthcare impacts, economic loss and land loss, right? Property loss, assets, that kind of thing. So maybe hopefully none of that hits us again. Who's to say? We haven't had a flood in 125 years here. But in any case, those were some of the things that were very odd and unique about the pandemic situation was really all of the unknowns and the reaction of the healthcare, the medical community to quickly respond to that much more rapidly than they have in the past with the development of the vaccines and now the the antiviral tablets and so forth that are coming online and the different programs. So that's what I have to say about that. But it comes down to everybody marching to the same beat. And if the elected officials are the ones that are driving the decision-making, then they need to understand the impacts of public health better.
That's a really great point. And that was a gap that we we had a hard time filling was the town doesn't have integrated access to a public health person that can advise on what does this mean? What, you know, what, who do we talk to? How do we get access to these things? There's public health at the county level, at the state and beyond, but the town itself doesn't have that person on staff. And it wasn't until Rin came on where we had a lot of that really great connectivity between the various different health organizations and and really able to kind of help us interpret that information in a way that that the entire group could understand and then pass around. And she helped with a lot of amazing things like driving a living will program to 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 push that effort and really inform people on what what steps they could take early on if they were high risk that would help their families. And as we look to other problems, we mentioned fentanyl and things like that. Understanding the organizations that are here and and are existing and coordinating with them, I think it's a hierarchy, hierarchy harm reduction is an amazing organization that is already at play here, already doing a lot of the the groundwork for how do we test drugs? How do we, you know, do harm reduction and educate the community in ways that are proven to work as opposed to just, you know, ignoring it or or dealing with in the criminal justice system, like dealing with it upfront within the community. And so having those bridges built, I think for any of these health-related concerns going forward would be really beneficial to the community.
Well, and then as Erica mentioned earlier, the task force was recognized valley wide and by all three county public health organizations. The task force was recognized. And we talked about it in some of our meetings on a county level, but for some reason, some of them were not able to reach out, nor did this task force have the bandwidth to do anything more than what it was doing. But definitely it's come up in conversation in both Garfield County and different organizational meetings that I've attended as well as the public health sector. So those are some, you know, connections that have already been recognized. And, you know, if anything were to move forward, there are some individuals there that you wouldn't really have to build a relationship with. So I think that's a positive thing to look at as you're planning the way to go ahead.
Lauren, I'm going to put you on the spot again. What what are your thoughts in how you see the town? How the, how you see the town's role in this task force or this framework going forward?
Well, I think the town can, and I'm speaking really off the cuff here because I have not given this anywhere near enough thought to have a well-formed idea. But I think that one of the things that the town can do is form a base for as a jumping off point. Because people move around, some people get busy or sick or older or, you know, what, but the town is is still here. And these and the people might change, but the functions do not generally. So I think that that the town could put together a framework and a a plan, very loose plan for how to react in case of certain situations. And and potentially work with the community partners to to have those relationships be maintained on a regular basis. Even if there is no crisis work to be done. We do that anyway. We have a relationship with Manaus and we have a relationship with the chamber and we have, you know, so the relationships are already there. It's just a better, I think, defining of potential roles, particularly in times of crisis, and that could be a pandemic, or it could be a recession, or it could be, I mean, we could define, you know, what are the roles and under what circumstances? I hope that's what you're asking.
Thank you. Kirk. Yeah. Just real briefly, Ms. Kistler and I have spoken about this just very briefly. And there is future plans in emergency management. I mean, an emergency manager would pretty much handle those type of roles, even pandemic planning. It's kind of interesting. That's actually part, sorry, that's part of DHSEM's emergency management training. They they do include the Department of Homeland Security and Emergency Management for Colorado. And in in their emergency management trainings, pandemics are were a part of that before this pandemic came came about. But there are, there's a significant amount of money, grant monies that are out there to assist municipalities with their emergency planning. Currently, we're going through the hazard mitigation planning for that with with Garfield County and with some organizations, third-party organizations that are helping put that together. But there are also other other grant opportunities for coop plans, which are continued operations to ensure that municipal government can continue to function normally under any situation, whether it's a pandemic, a wildfire, terrorism, you name it. And I think it it goes right along with the PC's planning as well. That's good to know. That's a good segue into, I've just been taking notes and thinking about what this looks like. And I have the easy task of just making a recommendation and saying, that is what I would do. But I think, I think we've had it all. Well, if if there's already a framework to incorporate something more broad than a specific incident or a crisis, then then that's great. I see the town, whether it's this exact framework or Lauren, you mentioned, you know, other aspects, I don't know, but if if we were responsible for, we, the town, were responsible for holding the framework, facilitating this as part of emergency management, basically doing PC's role unless you wanted to join again. And I think in in looking through the eight lines of effort, I think we already have sort of leads that would probably be willing for health. We had Ruin Fork Family Practitioners involved. Chad Canal's put in a lot of time. Thank you to him. Or if someone from the community like Rin wanted to be involved, then great. We have the chamber willing to hold the economy. We have the town with communications. We probably convinced Carbondale Arts to be human capital. We have the town for finance. We probably could have Ruin Fork technologists as the on-call for technology. Again, the town and the Board of Trustees for advocacy or the mayor and our incident commander, whether you call it emergency management or incident command for crisis response. And then if you just set, there could either be, you know, regular meetings and say, well, let's start doing this now, or at the very least, you know, four times a year or twice a year or something, this group got together and says, is there anything? Have we learned anything? Should we be implementing anything? And then what what this task force did so well is it it responded to champions of ideas. And that way, at the very least, this is a conduit for folks to say, hey, I want to start Neighborhood Heroes again, or I want to do this. This is a conduit. So by no means am I saying all we do is create this framework and sit idle, but ultimately, you need a champion to push these other things. And this is where the champions can plug into. So I don't know if there are thoughts on that or PC, if you.
I think one one quick thought is we we talk a lot about affordable housing crisis in our community. And that's, that's an example of you. You might be able to think, how would we as a community respond to that? It's not the town's mandate to make affordable housing. It's not the authority of the town, but the town has a role. People have a role. Organizations here are working to solve that. That could be an example of, quote, a crisis or a problem that the community would like to solve, where you could apply it in, it's not an emergency in the kind of statutory definition of an emergency. Where FEMA comes out or, you know, the emergency management or emergency command, incident command gets stood up. But it is something that the community can work on to come to a solution over time. And you could identify what lines of effort apply in that, who might have a role in that, you know, Andrea is going to have a role in that, you know, but then there's going to be other organizations that are around that can help solve it and help really put things into perspective. And so as as the community talks about these things at at bars and water coolers and PTA nights, you know, those are some opportunities to also look towards using a framework like this or using the community to help solve some of these problems.
Oh, Heather.
Thanks, Dan, and thanks to everyone. Sounds like when it comes out of my mouth, like nowhere near enough for what everyone did. I only have the very small piece I could talk to, which was the Neighborhood Heroes. And I think that that's, that'd be a really fascinating piece of this to keep. I I don't know. I mean, to just keep some energy around when we talk about communicating and how much we have to rely on whatever, electrical network, the internet. And probably one of our biggest vulnerabilities is around that. And just thinking about this, like door-to-door communication that was happening with the Neighborhood Heroes was incredibly powerful. And something for me that would be amazing to foster in good times so that it was a network in place in our most challenging times. I have no idea what that means, but like, that was just an observation I would make from doing this very tiny piece of this huge effort that you guys put together.
Yeah, I disagree. I think the challenge is the champion. And I would not surprise me in the least if there was someone who said, yeah, I'll I'll hold that. But I think that's and I particularly think if it's someone from the community, that it's it's even more powerful. But Marty and Lauren, Marty and then Lauren.
Yeah, I'll be very, there are two things. And Lonnie, this also goes to what you were saying. I mean, to me, the people who set up the testing outside town hall. Yeah, when you couldn't find a test, second thing is I think we have a continuing thing with the pandemic. Please tell me I'm wrong, but concerns with the mental health, especially of kids and teenagers who are isolated, and not just kids and teenagers, seniors who, you know, were living alone and isolated and couldn't have the normal social activities. And I think there's some still some effect of that. The other thing when you speak about this, Dan, if you have this as a once a quarter town sponsored, you know, with a town person involved, with two town people involved. Nothing else, you maintain your list of contacts. You can reach out, maybe make other contacts. Garfield County gets a health director. Instead of the Board of Trustees, the County Commissioner, sorry. You know, that maybe they could be included in this or. But I think there's not only too much knowledge, the opportunity to have those contacts with other people. If you said it was Valley View physicians. Doesn't have to be Valley View physicians. I mean, maybe we could get a contact at Valley View Hospital. You know, or whatever. You know, or or whatever. But I think having some, just very broad where you have, once every three months, people get together, whether it's Zoom or virtually or in person. What I'd love to see come out of it is some type of online or published guidebook. So when a crisis erupts, then pull this resource and say, okay, this is who we used for public communication last time. Let's call them or email them to see if they're still available and willing. This is who we use for advocacy, but we just don't recall Erica. But, you know, so you have a list of resources available and that can be kept updated as people move out of town or, you know, their lives change or whatever. I think that'd be a valuable resource, you know, God knows, I hope we add no more pandemics. But crises come up, of course, it's just the way it is. So it sounds like it'd be, me, I think it'd be great to have some type of just outline. A list of contacts.
Thanks, Marty. Lauren?
Thank you, Drew, and thank you to everybody, Andrea, Rin, I mean, what you guys did was amazing. And as Heather said, we can't thank you enough. I mean, I agree with Marty that the framework is here for whatever the next crisis may be, and whether that's drought or God forbid fire, but it seems like that next one, it may not give us the lead time, but this, we had a lot of time to kind of think about this with COVID. It may be more triage response as opposed to this type of response. So I just think it's important to take that framework, as Marty has said, and and start thinking about how that might be applied to. You know, and we've seen it obviously in so many different places, whether it's, you know, California, Boulder, how that responses really has to be community-driven in terms of getting people to understand when they can come back to their homes. How can they start to rebuild? So it's 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 looking at a crisis, obviously, in a very different manner, which I know you're familiar with. But I think it's good that that framework is already here and it's just thinking about like now's the time to to think about how, you know, we can do that. I mean, I thought about this in terms of like, you know, do we even have sirens here that warn about fire? No. That's, you know, something right there. But it's 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 good that we're talking about it now because it's a we won't know what it is till it gets here.
Thanks, Louise. Chief, do you see like attaching this to emergency management as a good thing, a bad thing? Do you have other ideas?
I think it's a somewhat natural thing for a municipality. And again, I think that the framework is already here. I mean, that's very obvious. I think what Marty is talking about as far as getting an emergency operations plan together and making sure that it's not just distributed through the town, but through all of our advocacy groups. I mean, this town is amazing, how many advocacy groups and how many nonprofits showed up and and participated. I think that's something very easy that that could happen and I'm willing to put in effort to make that happen. I mean, that emergency management's a passion of mine as well. I would love to to get together with PC and and have some conversations along that those lines as well. But I I think that we can put together something rather rapidly that's very loose on, in certain situations, whether it's a hazmat, a tanker overturning or another pandemic or wildfire, whatever the crisis may be, that we have we have a book, a reference to jump to immediately, and everybody's playing from the same sheet of music very quickly.
And to PC's point, what neither PC or I have done is wrote down the lessons learned. And if there's this structure, then after those events could could document that. So that's truly a living document.
When when he said it, I wrote it down and I was, I'm on that tomorrow.
Well, Dan will have a lot of time pretty soon.
A memoir to write, right? All right.
I just wanted to add.
Yeah, go for it.
So I like the idea of quarterly meetings of at least this, I don't know if it's a crisis response committee. It's not a group going out and fighting the fire, but it would be activated in the aftermath of something happening. And so making sure that we're, we know who all those people are, and we've had at least a couple of conversations throughout the year. I really like the idea of, and I think Rin mentioned it, of activating the Neighborhood Heroes on other topics and figuring out, and I'm not gonna articulate it well here, but how else can we formalize that or use that to get some information out? And I also think our community could really use that right now, where we have a lot of new people who maybe moved here. But it's almost just like a, kind of goes along with the Chamber work of growing kindness and just making sure people are meeting each other. And maybe that's one way is we have neighborhoods divided up and make sure we have somebody who goes out and hands out some information on mental health information right now. Like, it might not be related to a crisis we're responding to, but figuring out what that could be, I think could be really a a cool thing for us to work on this next year. And then, PC, I really like you bringing up that while we might have this committee or this group activated for a response to something, but we also have a framework that we could use to tackle other issues that we're, we definitely are gonna have a hard time tackling. We have a lot of work ahead of us. And so how do we bring in those experts to tackle housing? I think that was an excellent example. Because it might not be all the same experts. There'll be some overlap. Like you said, Andrea is gonna be on every committee. But yeah, how can we use this, this idea of bringing in a network of people who have the resources, knowledge and access that really stood out to me? So thanks.
One thought that I had on the Neighborhood Heroes is I don't know who runs the One Town, One Table activity, the event itself. But Parks and Rec, leveraging that as an opportunity to push out to the neighborhood as part of that event. So, you know, outreach, hey, come to this event, you know, providing information about what's going on as well at the same time, but maybe that's an event or an exercise where this could be bolted on to it. And it kind of fits in community building already.
I think that's a great idea, Erica. I think, given given the level of anxiety, I certainly have experience from our community members in recent years. I I agree that and and the opposite was true during the task force because people were so cooperative and, you know, what can I do to help? That it could be a tool to get us back to where we were before the pandemic. So that's a great idea. With that said, Ben, Lauren, Chief, do you guys feel like you have the direction you want to move?
I think so. I mean, I would just echo the appreciations, first of all, for everybody who was involved in this. And PC especially for taking the lead and really making it happen. I think it's one of those things that clearly wouldn't have happened without your vision. And that's a rare moment when you can have an impact like that. I'm really just listening and learning and thinking. I don't have a clear, you know, plan for how we do this. I like Chief Wilson's ideas of folding it into our general emergency management response planning somehow, but also being cautious to not just make it a town kind of bureaucratic function because it seems like a lot of the power of this was the community-driven nature of it. And so that that's kind of a delicate balance and I'm not prepared to offer any solutions on that right now. I love these ideas like Erica's about, you know, maintaining the Neighborhood Heroes. I assume we have that list of people somewhere. Someone does. So I just want to make sure that we, yeah, that we get that and and are able to to activate that in some way. So, yeah, I don't, I don't feel, I don't feel like I have a clear path going forward right now for how to do this. But I think as a collective, I think we'll figure it out.
Seems like maybe the next steps. Again, I don't want to commit the town to it, but the the town being, holding a facilitation role for for these lines of effort. And I think some of them are clearly community members or community organizations that hold those. But maybe the first order businesses, Kirk and Chief Wilson and PC can talk. And you can download, you know, the the documents and things and we can be the repository for that information. That sounds like a plan. That's encouraging.
I mean, one thing I would note is it's interesting, Chief Wilson mentioned that you know, pandemic response is part of like your standard manual of, you know, how to it seems like whatever was written in those plans didn't hold up. So I'm curious to what degree that'll be rewritten at, you know, at higher levels or to what degree it's kind of up to us to rewrite that. And I feel like that was always probably the part of emergency management that people were like, oh, that's never gonna happen, pandemic. And, you know, here we are having lived through it. So it might be worth us spending some time at both the staff and board and community kind of reviewing the various parts of our emergency management plans. And it's great to hear that our chief police has a passion for that kind of work. And and just, you know, taking each one very seriously, because I think we all take fire and drought very seriously. And something like a mass shooting, as we see in the news today, like we all know that those are very real threats in any community. But there are probably some other things that fall kind of under this umbrella of probably won't happen, but if it does, we probably want some kind of plan in place.
I think there's an important caveat to that also is the pandemic response or whatever emergency response is is usually pretty well-written. It's it's tested, like all of that. It doesn't account for the autonomous actors that are out there doing their own thing. Those plans never account for the non-governmental organization that is delivering food to people of their own free will, of their own mandates, with their own funding. And it becomes like, almost like a logic leap for the the people that are doing this institutional or governmental response to incorporate all of those people with no leader, with no one person saying you have to do this. But really just saying, hey, we're all trying to do the same thing. Let's see if we can, you know, join forces. So that if this person has 20 people and this person has a lot of food, guess what? Now you have 20 people that can deliver food. But without that, you have the institutional response. And then you have all these other people that are just doing other things that are well-intentioned and whatnot. And this is kind of about stepping ahead of that and saying, how do we tie all that together?
I appreciate that, PC. That's a really good kind of framework, I think, for us to think about this going forward. It's it's a missing component of a standard emergency management or crisis response point. Thank you.
Big missing component because, you know, things like food and lodging, not anything past emergency shelter are just not dealt with in those. So I think that they are a good baseline for managing the immediate response. But it doesn't go any further than that. I wouldn't depend too much on that for what we're trying to do here.
Agree. And one example would be the Colorado Office of Victims Assistance, of course, and that is a governmental organization. However, they have their little offshoots of public and again, private contacts that can go out there and take care of the aftermath following a mass shooting or following a big crisis, which is really what the victims need, right? So COVA is pretty tied up with limited resources and many other things happening, but it's the follow-up that's very important as well.
All right. Whenever PC's involved, we get a lot, we get a lot done. So thank you, PC, for joining us.
And long conversations.
Rin and Andrea, thank you for joining us. I really appreciate it. Thanks, everybody. I feel very good about this discussion. Before we wrap up, any any questions on minutes? Everybody gonna be here next week for our discussion about Town Center and American Tree and Cement Properties. What was the other?
That's it right now.
Okay.
When is the recycle conversation coming up?
That's one of those things, probably in there.
Okay, we are adjourned. Thank you.